We can call the meeting to order. A little tap and we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think the attendance sheet is going around. Minutes from January. Think these looked good. Anyone have any comments, thoughts, musings? Good. And anyone, any comments? Then if no comments or questions, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 2024. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seal seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes have been approved. Thank you. Cory. We can move on to our regular business with our first WLS report.
Thank you, guys. Relatively straightforward meeting from a couple of weeks ago. Essentially, we had the election of the three new trustees, including myself for Nourishel. We had Maureen LeBlanc, who's for District Eight, Larchmont, Maranix, Scarsdale. And then for District Four, which includes South Salem, North Salem, Somers, was Barbara Tepper. They're still looking for a person to represent Yonkers. They're interviewing candidates right now. There was also the induction of new officers. President Susan Martik, Vice President was Nishat Hydari, which is spelled H-Y-D-A-R-I. And the Secretary was Anthony Amiano. In terms of other exciting things, just a very brief overview of the budget would show that our net revenue is relatively stable over the last five years, which is positive. Yesterday was Library Advocacy Day in Albany, which was a big event. Terry makes a very good showing and has done an amazing job recruiting folks to help talk with the various legislators about advocating for issues pertinent to Westchester. The Westchester County 2024 budget was approved at the Board of Legislators in December of 2023 calendar year. And their general allocation was a little bit over $1.3 million for 2024, which is about a 5% increase compared to the year prior. The total executive budget for New York State that Governor Hawke signed for libraries is about $102 million, which was great. The rest of the meeting essentially was just closed session regarding various personnel matters that were discussed.
Thank you. Excellent. That's good news. And I love these advocacy days up in Albany. I'm actually about to go do one in a couple of weeks myself, so yay. And it'll be fun to see how that goes. Good. So President's Report, that's next. I'm just going to report on the search for our new director. We have honed in. We received three very good proposals from well-regarded firms. We have narrowed down to one that we think will be a great fit for us. We're just waiting for answers to some questions that we posed and believe that we will be able to begin, hopefully soon, an agreement and contracting process and get the search started. So that's great news. Thank you to our ad hoc search committee. That includes board members and staff. And I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you. And Director's Report with Tom.
Thank you, Whitney. Fairly brief report, mostly updates on our many grants that are in various states of process. In terms of our grant that we received in 2021. The teen, we are done with the HCL element long ago, which was the new air conditioning units. We are currently working still at the main library in regards to the third floor renovation. And we are almost done, except for the last element, which is devising a solution regarding the two meeting rooms and the enclosure of the teen area. And we've had bids back from the architect and we've also had other conversations about other approaches to complete this project. We're not ready for a solution now, but we're hoping in the next few weeks, we'll be meeting with staff to talk about options. And we move forward and have something more exciting to share at the March meeting. In terms of the fire stopping and safety project, I did not get an update from the architect. I assume he may be away, but I did get an update from our lead custodian, Rob Lauren, who was on top of these sorts of things and does a great job. He tells me just recently that in regards to Gleason Power, the vendor that's working on this project, they are now in their last phase. And that phase will mean that they will need to work in the lobby. And they expect to be starting on February 19th and they will finish on Wednesday, the 21st. They're not going to work on the 20th because the friends are in business that day and they don't want to interfere with that. And Rob is very comfortable that this work can occur sectioned off, keeping both the patrons as well as the Gleason Powers employees safe. So it looks like we're nearly at the end.
I have a question. The 19th is a holiday. Does that impact that schedule at all?
No, we oftentimes will allow vendors to come in and work on holidays because it's terrific because it doesn't really impact on how we serve our public. And so this is a good thing. We'll have one of our custodians in to just sort of open the building and supervise and then close it when the project's over. You know, our goal always with these projects is the least amount of inconvenience to our patrons and our staff as possible. And we've had a lot of projects and we've pretty much kept the buildings open all through these projects. I'll try to continue with that. Let's see. The construction grant that was submitted in 2022, the children's library element, which was work on all three floors. Some storage issues, a new sort of renovated desk on the first floor of the circulation, a desk in the Huguenot Children's Library. And the lower level where we did quite a lot with a new floor, painting, new countertop and sink. And sort of a rough refinish of the cabinets down there at all has been completed. It looks great. We also painted. And so it really looks like it has a really bright new shine to the building, which we're really pleased. So that is set. Let's see. The exciting element about the main library project for that year is that we, as you folks know, you've heard us talk about the noise abatement project. And finally, at long last, it will be taking place and really soon. Thanks to the work of Kira Ayello and Elizabeth Joseph, they've been really managing this and it's exciting. We expect to see the installation team arrive on February 26th, which is a Monday, and they will be done, finished on Friday, the first, so one week. And so they'll be doing the panel installation throughout the library. And Kira and Elizabeth have worked with the staff to schedule around the functionality of the library. So we're pretty convinced that we're not going to be inconveniencing things to any great degree. So it's exciting. Be ready for a different look, you know, throughout the library and hopefully a wider library. So that's that. The grant that we submitted last year in August, which is the second and final phase of the abatement project. And also a library signage and wayfinding, as well as the Huguenot Children's Library renovation of the bathrooms in the lower level in the first floor. Still kind of working its way through the Albany process or Marass, however you want to call it. But we are hopeful that we've received preliminary approval through WLS, et cetera. We're hopeful that there will be some sort of grant announcement that will be made in the summer or early fall. And the money will arrive shortly thereafter and start with those exciting projects. The ARPA grant, as you folks know, we have this $250,000 grant through the foundation with the city of New Rochelle. And the city council had previously approved this grant. There was a contract that was sent to the foundation and the foundation examined it, shared it with our board. We had a very productive meeting in which we articulated a number of the issues going forward with this project. There was a document that was composed that reflected our concerns and questions and was sent to the Development Commissioner and his staff. And we're waiting for a response in order to move forward, hopefully execute the contract once all parties are satisfied. And then we'll be starting to think about this project. And so I don't have anything tangible yet. We really are sort of at the stoplight, waiting to get a green light and hopefully that will come soon. So I'll keep you all posted. Let's see what else. I just want to remind you that continuing education, as sponsored by the Westchester Library System, continues. There is a program that will be held on March 6th, not via Zoom, but will be in person at 4:30 to 7:30 at the Westchester Library System Headquarters in Elmsford. And the title is Tools for Transforming Libraries: Municipality Relationships. It might be an interesting one. And so if you folks are interested, please register or I'll help register you folks. And if you do register and attend, you will be meeting your trustee education requirement. The Friends of the New Rochelle Public Library continue to function very successfully with their store, open hours on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. The Friends had not been accepting donations through January of this year because the Friends office was in the middle of renovations, which was a little chaotic. But I'm happy to report as of Friday that project is over. We have a new floor. We have paint. We have new furniture. And so the Friends will be using that office as really sort of a back room in terms of sorting things, storing their financial resources, their cash before they bank. And the room is now being used not just by the Friends. The other half of the room is being used by the children's department. They have lots and lots of things, as you can imagine, for children programs. And I have to say, when they built this building, they did a number of good things. One thing they did not do was build in any kind of storage, really. So for a long time, things were always just shifting here and there. But with the renovation of this office, we can now devote a portion of it for children's storage. So the room looks good. Let's see. Foundation, happy to report that the next Foundation Board meeting, I wrote the date down. I think it's the 12th. I can send it out to you folks. March. Yep.
Is there a calendar that we could just have access to, just a calendar of all of the Foundation?
Sure.
That would be helpful. Okay.
And it will be here in person at 7:30. So let's see what else. And the Friends will, the Foundation will also be sponsoring a Cocktails and Conversation at Alvin and Friends Restaurant, Thursday, April 4th, which is not a board meeting day, I have to report, at 6:30 PM. And the author is Eric Lindenberg, who wrote a book most recently, 2020, One City, Seven People in the Year, Everything Changed. But Eric has written often in the past and he's written about issues that relate to social interactions. He's a real champion of libraries and somebody that's worth meeting and listening to. So if you folks have some time, might be fun to go to Alvin's, have some nosh, maybe a drink. And hear a good author speak. And last but not least, I want to remind you folks, and I think you have a packet in your folders about our Guardian Gala that is coming up on Thursday, May 9th. And it will be at Green Tree Country Club and will be honoring people who are championing libraries, both nationally and locally. And
Including Tom.
Right. Yep, including me. And certainly Chris Sellen, who's been a real champion. And I hope you folks can attend, maybe have a, you can talk about what the library is going to do. And I'm done.
Good. No, I'm just reaching in the context of this broadcast about the May 9th Gala. The Foundation always asks the trustees to serve on the gala committee. They want to list our names, so I let them know that we would be asking. It's not an obligation of time, mostly just the listing and attending if you can and helping to spread the word. So is anyone opposed to that? Nope. So I will give them the green light that, to please list everybody. And thank you.
Thank you. I'm done with my report. I'll go on to the Personnel Report, which is fairly brief, but happy to answer any questions if you folks have any. Hearing none? Okay. You're welcome. I'm really excited. I talked about it at our last meeting, but I'm very excited to present to the Board a motion to approve our employment of our newest full-time employee, who is Florence Simo Oya. She is our new Children's Librarian One Outreach Services. And Florence is a great hire. She's been working for us for a number of years as a part-time librarian. She's smart and lovely and energetic and is a New Rochelle resident and has at least one small child. So she's just a great addition to the staff. We did a big search and Florence was by far the best candidate. So we're really hired, happy about that. Florence has started, so February 1st, and her annual salary is $58,707. And so I'd love a motion.
Sure, I'm happy. Reflecting Tom's happiness. Yeah, it's wonderful. I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Florence Semenola at the salary mentioned by Tom just now, $58,707, with a start date of February 1st. Can I get a second? The last seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Her hiring.
Hope you have a chance to meet her. Oh, you did? Yeah, she's great. Yeah, so she brings a lot to the table. Excited. We also have not a motion for the Board because this young woman has not started. But after a very successful search for Circulation Library Clerk position, we have hired somebody who looks like a great choice. Her name is, my handwriting, Bailey, Ms. Xena Bailey. And she is a Circulation Clerk hourly and she'll be starting on the 16th of February. So in March, I'll ask for a resolution to approve her hiring. And Milton Cobb, who's our Circulation Head, and his staff did a great job. We have lots of good candidates. And Ms. Bailey emerged as the best candidate out of a strong pool. And so hopefully in near future, you'll get a chance to meet her too as well. And that's it.
Thank you, Tom. That's great. Assistant Director's Report with Elizabeth.
So I just wanted to add about Zeneta and that pool when we were looking, most of our top candidates were actually library school students. So it's really great that we can provide this platform for them to learn about fashion and give them some experience. So excited to have Zeneta, who I believe goes to Queens College Library School. So I'm a big sort of data nerd. And so what I did for this past month's report is look at material circulation and patron engagement. So we started out by looking at the end of 2023, but I figured a deeper dive would give me a more interesting fuller picture. So that's what we did. So when we looked at three years' worth of data, we found some really interesting and encouraging data points that confirmed that the NRPL is on the upward trend. So we looked at circulation data materials primarily for adults, which includes new books, older books, DVDs and audiobooks. And low and behold, we have seen a steady increase in the circulation of adult books. I think that this really speaks to the tender loving care that the librarians are putting on each of the books that are coming in, whether they're new or whether they're being returned. I think just the careful consideration of all these books, it's really sort of adding to making the shelves look more attractive and people wanting to check out books more. We have also learned that while streaming is ubiquitous in so many homes and so many communities, it's not really proving that in terms of our DVD circulation, which continues to grow. I mean, I think just in the past month alone, almost 2,000 DVDs went out. So even if like half of us like have every streaming platform, there are a lot of people that rely on DVDs for their entertainment purposes. Interestingly enough, audiobooks, physical audiobooks are really declining. And that really sort of says something about the equipment that we need to listen to audiobooks, because a lot of cars now don't have CD players. And CD players are really not even in our homes. And then I think just the physical, the mobility of audiobooks doesn't make sense for a lot of folks. Digital media content continues to like climb, go through the roof. We're seeing growth, not just in sort of overdrive and hoopla, but we're also seeing a lot of increase in some of our newer electronic resources. The children's room, I think the children's room continues to astonish me because I've worked in a few libraries and I'll say this, but the circulation here really has exceeded a lot of great library systems. When a lot of library systems are seeing a downward decline, we are not facing that here at the Nourishel Public Library. I think it really speaks to the staff of the children's room that are so attentive to needs and interests of children. Checkouts in all format remain impressive. And then we introduced wonderbooks and launchpads last year, which are really starting to see a great interest as well. All of this, I think, has led to them really rethinking their space. So they have like really amended and adapted their space to make it more kid-friendly. And then they are now like, in fact, branching out into the other side of the first floor, where they are all sort of create a more tween-friendly space, right? For books, including like J fiction and graphic novels. So that gives tweens kind of a separate space, sort of like a space to graduate from like the children's and just to give them more room to browse and be more independent, I guess. The same thing goes for teen materials. We are also seeing an increase in book circulation for teens. Particularly manga and graphic novels are what drives teens to like the teen room. We're also seeing an increase in the circulation of our gaming collection, which includes like Sega and PlayStation, all of those like video games. Interestingly enough, the American Library Association put out a report at the end of last year, which really revealed that young people, younger generations are now rediscovering libraries and not just libraries of physical spaces, but print books, right? There's a real kind of tactile relationship that they're really looking for in terms of, in terms of books. Other great statistics, transactional, in 2023, we saw an 11% increase in reference transactions. And then 2022, over 60% compared to the previous year of 2021. So really, the trend is really just sort of sky high. And these transactions really represent lots of different types of questions, right? So they help with technology, book requests, local history questions, museum passes, all of those things are really adding to the reference transactions here. And our transactions also include questions that come via phone, email questions, all kinds of reference informational questions. Technology access, both in-house usage of our computers and our Wi-Fi access is really just so robust. I mean, it's really interesting to see. I think the addition of all the new study spaces, we're seeing a lot of people using them, adding to the use of Wi-Fi. Last but not least is all of our programs. You'll see a steady growth in the past couple of years. In 2023 alone, we had over 2,300 programs. So pretty, pretty amazing. And in terms of program attendance, in 2023, we surpassed over 400,000 people who attended our programs, which is an increase of about 50% from 2022. And then in 2020, 40,000, right? Right?
Right? 40,000?
Yes.
Not 400,000?
No, not 400,000. Yeah, I know. That would, that would be Yes, that would be, that would be a good benchmark for the future. Yeah, that would be a great benchmark for the future. But yeah, that's, it's aspirational.
Yeah.
I think all of this really reflects the resilience and the energy of the Nourishel Public Library. And I think that we have a great staff and we offer so many wonderful things that really, you know, there's something for everyone at the end of the day.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Two things. I can't remember if you sent this email to us with the link, but I think the conversation, there was a link to it, a story by the conversation, which and I've been carrying it, waiting to send it to everybody. So now you're like, Gen Z and millennials have an unlikely love affair with their local libraries.
Right.
So I can't remember.
Yes, it was right. Yes, I think I shared that with you. Right, yes.
I wish I could say that I stumbled upon it because I just
Yes, yeah, that was
Thank you then for sharing because I've been holding on to it.
Yeah, and with that study, it really proves like our own experience here, right? That they want teens, want a place to be respite. They want a place just to kind of hang out, not think about like their problems and they want to like have fun and
Yeah. And I think, and I was holding it because, because I also think to encourage all of us to share it on our social media as trustees, to be able to add to that, add to the data that we're hearing and link to a story. I think that that's a powerful way to continue to show support. Just one question that I had was, are you able to track the Libby use?
Yes.
Somebody, any, did I miss that or was that?
Yeah, that's actually, you call it Libby, but the company is called Overdrive. Right, right. The app is called Libby.
Okay. All right. So it's, wow, that's a significant uptick then.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And then if you're seeing that decline with audiobooks, is there a plan or thinking around what?
Yes, there is. So last year, we significantly reduced the amount that we put into audiobooks and we moved it elsewhere. And we're going to probably do the same this year.
So I would think that the uptick in, I mean, you're going to see more of it now.
Right, right.
And I don't say that just because I'm a Libby user.
Right, you're the one that's eating up all of our
Only
Single-handedly.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments? Nope, it's great. 400,000, man.
I know, really. I know. You put something out in the universe. So we have
Well, we got there 10 years. It only takes 10 years. Maybe less.
Maybe less.
Good. Thank you. That brings us to Committee Reports. And we'll start with Cory and the Budget Committee. Yes, me. You're welcome.
Hello. Going through literary protocol process. Warrants approved. Do you have? I want to speak to the. We're not. We shouldn't, we shouldn't have put the website here.
We've said it a bit.
It's a revenue. We were trying to get. Okay. Well, my point is that revenue see, the revenue see shouldn't matter because you're seeing in twenty twenty-five. Or because the expense is still sitting on the books, right? We see three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was in my shit. Looking at it.
So why don't we, why don't we look at it?
For that. If that's a great other than that.
Don't think it's a ground.
And.
Yeah, yeah, is ready for feedback on that or?
You know, we we said there are.
Not playing the vegetable card. I hate vegetables out of that garden.
Right. You're right. The law said to. When it's something. Especially if it's. Oh. Yeah, we need. Pushing that. Books. August. Years ago, we had the term. The four. So.
How do we heat the library now? How do we heat the library now?
We use oil.
Are they in in the ground too?
No, no, no. Basement, no.
We don't know how how big the tanks are, but they.
You know, I would, you know, I don't. Oh, and I should know. I started in eighteen, nineteen, twenty. We had just put up a good floor. And the system that we had previously, that we had a system that wasn't dual. Which. You know.
But they swapped out tanks in the seventies. And then when did they put them in the basement? Right, there's never been. Seventeen?
No, I said they were. They're still there. They're still there, but not, they've never been swapped out.
No, no, but I thought you said they put those tanks in the ground in the seventies.
These are different.
Going to say, oh, I was going to say like, why didn't they just go in? Okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, it was interesting. This building. Um, they are. The department. Be public. International. But no. So. College. Yeah.
Uh, thank you. So that's that's the location of the building.
Yeah. So I get to give some details on all the wonderful programming that Elizabeth mentioned, and I really just want to say that you know, I didn't, I reported on these programs, but I didn't do the math on the attendance and forty thousand in one year. It's just like hats off, just a testament to the staff of the library for creating such diverse programming that attracts so many people. Obviously, there's repeat customers, but forty thousand, that's half of the city, so to speak, that comes here into the building or attends virtually, and that's an amazing feat. So hats off to all the staff of the library. So I get to give a little bit of detail. I want to start so for I'll give some feedback, or I'll give some a report on what happened in January, but I want to highlight it's really a robust program that the staff put together for Black History Month. Because there are so many great programs, a couple of them already happened. I'll just talk about those and then I'll highlight what's coming up. There's currently in the gallery and exhibit the fine art of illustration by Cedric Lucas. And Cedric Lucas is probably known to many around Westchester. He has been teaching art in Westchester schools for thirty-three years and has published twelve children's books since nineteen ninety-five. His art is right outside. It's really worth taking a look at. It will be on display through February twenty-fifth. On, there's an ongoing program. One session already happened, three more are coming. An African dance workshop led by Book and I, the African Dance Troop. And the upcoming sessions are on, they're all on Saturdays, February tenth, seventeen and twenty-fourth. And on the tenth and the seventeenth, it'll be from three thirty to four thirty. And on the twenty-fourth, it'll be from one thirty to two thirty. And it's just, it's a great workshop where participants of all ages get to learn traditional West African dance movements. And with all the programs that I mentioned tonight, registration is encouraged on the website. It's NRPL.org. Just to give the staff the heads up on how many people likely will be attending. One, another program that already happened on February fourth was a documentary screening, The Presumption of Guilt. And it was very well attended. Fifty people attended that program. So that's really impressive. And one other that already happened, which I was actually bummed to miss because it's just I've heard of Madame C J Walker. She was the first black female millionaire. And I'm definitely going to follow up and and look that up because I've heard of her, but I didn't know that many details. And I'm going to just quickly tell you because she's so cool. She developed a line of beauty care products for black women. She built a factory, a hair salon, mail order business, a beauty school, with trained twenty thousand sales agents. So if you missed that program, definitely look her up and and take a look at that. Yeah. It's on Netflix, I think. Yeah. She's cool. Yeah. Yep.
Yes. Wasn't whatever. She was actually. You made it still. Or do they have a?
Oh, yeah. No. I know she's, she really is fascinating. Three pro, three programs coming up that I want to highlight as part of the Black History Month programming. February eleventh, so this upcoming Sunday, there will be a concert by the young musicians of Westchester. That is at two o'clock. Again, please register on the website. February sixteenth at seven o'clock, there will be a jazz concert. The Ray Blue Ensemble, it's will be here at the library at seven o'clock. And on Sunday, the twenty-fifth, there'll be screening of Maya Angelou's Reflections of a Blessed Soul, which is just it's Maria, it's Maya Angelou sharing her insights on a whole range of of issues, racism, mother-daughter bonds, all of kind of really fascinating things. So that is on February twenty-fifth at two o'clock. This, it's a Sunday. So those, that's the Black History Month programming that I wanted to highlight. A couple of things that happened in January, this is where all the the busy season begins. And and some things happen in January, but now it's really kicking in. I've the the adult workshop, art workshop on January seventeenth was very well attended, and the knitting club continues, which is very popular. I don't know what the upcoming dates are for that. I read it somewhere. I'll I'll get to it in a minute. There was a Red Cross Blood Drive on January twenty-sixth that was well attended. There will be another one on the twenty-sixth, February twenty-sixth. Is that here in the lobby? Oh, it's right here. And there's a continued need. So February twenty-sixth, I don't have the time for that. But I'm sure it's, it'll be on the website. So I could have checked. The and and the other kind of block of programming that I want to draw your attention to is for Women's History Month, which is in March. And there will be a whole holster programming around that. And then quickly, the B top report. There is continued services for the patrons around any life issues, food support, employment, government benefits, and and you know, a whole range that I've talked about before. I just wanted to highlight one cool thing that is one of the most popular services in the room, which is the Notary Night. And this this February marks the twentieth monthly Notary Night. And it will have served fifty library patrons. So every third Thursday of the month in the B top room, you can get free notary services. That. All right, I know that. There's some program that I didn't mention. I don't don't want to go on too long, but everything is on the website. And I do want to mention that the website visits via Google increased forty-five percent year over year and sixty percent since December twenty twenty-third. So it's a, because it's a very good website and all the stuff is on the website. So go check it out.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to.
Wow.
And he died.
Public discussion. We. So. And notes, any comments?
Right on this, yeah.